Yeah.
Yeah.
Claiming?
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get this July 16th board meeting called to order and get this ball moving. We always start with invocation at the front end. I'll ask Mr. Schley if he'd be kind enough to get us moving in that direction.
Father, you are so good to us and your mercy extends to us and we feel it more and we thank you. Lord, we pray that as we begin this meeting today, that your power, your presence, your provision to us, Lord, would be apparent to us. Thank you for the skills that you've given these men and their willingness to sacrifice, Lord, so that they might serve their community. And I pray, Father, that they will do this in a way that is pleasing to you, that it reaches to every single citizen of our community. Father, those first responders that we think about, those guys that just take care of us, Lord, and our military personnel, Lord, we can't thank you enough for the blessing that they are in our lives and how you provide for this place where we can come and participate in our government freely and safely. Lord, we owe that all to you. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Schley. We'll go ahead and get started with public comments. The first on my agenda is the election commissioners, which I assume is Rivers is going to be speaking on their behalf. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Not used to being first. We want to talk to y'all about transporters of voting equipment. We want to propose a change on how we're doing it. Currently, we have to hire a transporter per precinct. We've got a couple of rare situations that they do too, but for the most part, we have to hire 50 transporters. And we have a lot of trouble with them. We have a lot of last minute, can't do it, and we end up transporting it, and that's complicated. We have some that call on election day around... You can't hear me. I'm not sure they can hear me. We have some that call at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock on election day and say they can't go pick it back up, and we have to scramble to figure out what to do, how to get it back. So, we would like to ask if we could hire one or two transporters per district to handle all of those precincts within that district and pay them, instead of the 120 that it currently is being paid for each precinct, just pay them 100 per precinct because they're doing all of them. And we would require them to have a covered trailer, and we would provide them the dates ahead of time so that they could plan for the year and try not to go out of town, things like that. What do you think?
Do they have to have a covered trailer?
Do I know?
Do they have to have a covered trailer?
They would have to because they would have all the... They would pick up the whole district.
No reason to ask is a covered pickup, would that work? Covered top on a truck?
A pickup's not going to be big enough to get a whole district's worth in there if we went with one. Now, if we went with two or three per... Yes. It just has to be something that's enclosed in case of weather.
Right. Oh, yeah.
People that are doing it now, we paying them before they finish or after?
After.
And they still balk on coming back, maybe even getting the...
Almost every election, we have at least one that'll call in.
Yeah, we don't pay him.
We don't pay him full. We don't pay him in full when they do that. Don't worry. Don't worry.
I don't see where downside is. The only thing, you might just make sure that we do all the service, whatever we have to do to get quotes or whatever. I don't know how y'all would handle that.
Y'all definitely want to take it under advisement, so it'll give us an opportunity to make sure that we're authorized to do it under statutes. And if so, how we need to handle compensating for that.
It'll be a little more. I mean, if we got somebody doing the whole district.
It'd be less.
It would be less. We currently pay one person $120 to transport one precinct. We're proposing we only pay 100 per precinct. One district goes... All that goes to one person. So, one person, like my district, has 12 precincts. If I had one, they would make $1,200, where normally it would be $1,200 plus the 20 times 12. And right now, don't ask me because I can't do the math.
The way that statutes are set up, it's really... It's designed around one hauler per precinct, sort of a setup. And there is a per diem amount and mileage reimbursement that goes with that. So, we want to make sure that if what is being proposed is to move to a multi-precinct for one individual, that we're authorized to do it. And so, it's an issue of getting into dollar amounts that may exceed.
Well, even if we have multiple, I mean, it's still one person delivering, right?
Yes, that's correct. I just want to make sure that we are on solid ground.
And we actually have talked to several... Leslie has called several districts, several counties, and we talked to some of them at Ecam. And there's a couple of them, I believe, that already do this. And then, there's some, a lot of the counties, brace yourself, the county employees, whether it's the road crew, maintenance, whatever, they actually transport. So, we like this idea better.
I see Mike Harrison back there saying, "Nope."
Mike likes this idea better, too.
Well, if we've done other counties that are already doing it, there's probably some authority.
Yeah.
So...
Just in case, don't say who it is, you know, because this is...
I'm not going to name names. My lips are sealed.
All right.
We'll check it out.
But further back here, if you did 50 precincts and 120, that's 6,000 every single time we roll out for an election. Doing it our way, the way we're proposing, would be 5,000. So, it's between 100 and 1,000, give or take.
Sounds good.
That it?
Thank you, ma'am.
Call if you have any more questions.
We appreciate it. I have next on my list, Mr. Michael Smith. Mr. Smith, you come forward, please. Mr. Smith, if you're kind enough, go ahead and state your address for us as well, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Michael J. Smith, 711 Falcon Way, Brandon, Mississippi. I'm the current president of the Woodbridge HOA, and we're just trying to find out when they're going to... The county's going to come out and pave the roads at Woodbridge. We've been promised over the years several times that the... That once we got built out, we're now built out to 80%. We'd like the county to get us on the schedule for putting the... Finishing the roads. Y'all have been holding the money for probably 10 years now, waiting for Woodbridge to get built out. It's now 80%. So, and the last time that y'all came out and did three-pronged road, there was a big meeting about that, and y'all said that once three-pronged got done, which it got finished, I think, two years ago now, that y'all would get us on the schedule to finish the roads out there. So, it's time.
Probably spent $3 million on three-pronged, you know, but...
Yeah, but you had to redo it twice.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, well. So, we would like y'all to try to get us on the schedule. We're gonna... Y'all were going to do it this year, and it seems like it's getting pushed back. Is that correct?
Well, it hadn't really been pushed back. We've kind of been putting it off to all of the construction stuff that was going on over there. You had several homes. We've been patching for the last year and a half or so just to get...
That's true.
We didn't want to mess things up. If we would've gone on in the spring, like we had discussed, it would've tore up already. So, we tried to let that last construction get through. But if you say y'all are ready and y'all are for that point, we'll notify.
And there's a lot of lots out there that probably will not be built on anytime soon, but the majority of the lots now have homes on them. There's about four or five more houses right now that they're putting the pads in. Once those pads are completed, the dump trucks and the concrete trucks won't be coming out there.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want to have done it till that was taking...
Well, that's why we're saying, you know, we would like to get it on the schedule now because we're ready for y'all to come do it, pretty much.
So, y'all are ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have to get these stuff off, yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Wait, wait. Sure, go ahead. Sure.
Mr. Smith, is it the sense of the HOA that all of the residents in Woodbridge are ready for this to happen?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the last meeting we had, they were all asking when the county was going to come out and pave the roads.
He's got some more to talk about.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and we got four more residents, three more residents back there sitting in the back, so.
Just as a matter of... To satisfy myself, do you mind?
Sure.
For us to get a communication from the HOA directly?
Yeah.
That says, "You are hereby notified that we want this overlay done now."
We can get y'all a letter. That's not a problem.
Okay.
It's not necessary. I just want it for posterity.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Is this a road that we had to take over, the finish of it, or... I mean, you're saying the county's holding a check?
It's one of those developer put up a letter of credit.
We had a letter of credit that we collected, Steve, and it's...
For the road itself, upon completion?
I don't remember the amounts, but it was pretty significant.
Over a million dollars.
It just took a while to get off the ground.
We've just been waiting. We've just been waiting on the completion of those homes to get to that spot.
Well, you can... You're welcome to come out now and look. I mean, it's...
I'm with you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you know, I'm sure everybody understands. We just don't want to put it down and then it get torn up again.
Right, but if you're saying...
We realize that.
And we had that discussion, you know, last year on the same side of that, to where we've talked about it multiple times. And we could've done it last year. We agreed to wait and hold off until after the summer was through. So, we've been having conversations about it a lot, so.
Okay, so, when do y'all think y'all are going to be able to do it?
I can't give you a timeframe right now. Let us check and get our stuff together. We'll talk with our asphalt folks. Obviously, we can't just click our heels and they're there tomorrow, right? So, we'll get you a timeframe.
Okay.
I'm in the same situation. People want the road done, but yet there's still some building going on. The ones that are already in there think that ought to go and get it finished. They don't... Sometimes they really don't realize these are our tax dollars. They'll come back and redo it when that forces turn to a toll.
Well, you know, I'm in the construction business too, so.
But if y'all feel like y'all are ready to go, so...
I think we're all on the same page here.
I got one question about this, though. Just, when we have situations like this and call the letter of credit to be done, do we go through our commodities contract, or can we get any contractor to go out there and do it?
No, it's got to improve our asphalt process, our commodity process. We always push it to be that. I think it's longer keeps the amount that we recover under the letter of credit segregated.
Yeah.
So, we kind of track that, I think, with our amount. But we kind of know where it is, so to speak. So, it's covered. We got it, but it's a timing issue.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I have Mr. Wyndham here as additional speaker, but he has since left the room, so we're going to move on. Old Business Minute, prior minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Son of agenda. So moved by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Cross. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Fortenberry.
Morning.
Morning.
It's time of year for our land sale coming up. Need authority to publish the notice, and I also like to publish a notice of a training session we're going to do one more time this year. So, it'll be two different notices.
Motion to approve by Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fortenberry. Ms. Sullivan.
Good morning. Just two items. Petition, change the assessment, 2017 real property assessment rule.
Motion by Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next.
Item B, request of void to 2017 tax sale for erroneous assessment.
That's to approve.
Most by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mark Harrison.
Mr. Parker, go ahead. Come on, get started. Father seems in a hurry.
Morning. Request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct a PFP cross connect cabinet utility along and across Hollybush Place to install between McLaurin, Surphel, and Hollybush Place. McLaurin, I mean.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. We'll let him call it. Then, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next.
Authorize engineering service to inspect drainage pipe, including Cameron at 114 Swallow Drive.
Motion by Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir. I got to get started.
I was just looking out for you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You don't know how much.
Bobby over calling you out halfway here.
That's right.
That's right. Okay. First item I have on the agenda is Hollybush Road improvements, and I'm recommending approval of parcel payment request number two in the amount of $143,792.76, an authority to issue the check.
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gay. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the next two items are final plats. Freedom Ridge, Part III. I'm recommending approval of that final plat. I'm also recommending approval of Freedom Ridge, Part IV. These are in Mr. Gaines' district.
How many lots are in each one of those? Do you know?
Six lots in three and seven.
Seven.
They have the same covenants as the one in two or whatever of Freedom Ridge?
I believe they did. I believe they did one, yeah.
Yes, they did.
We think that's right. Is that correct? See, I have to do that.
Okay, well.
Just traveling around the room there.
I went by there after we talked, and I went by there in the last three or four days, just looking, trying to determine what's what. This is still on a gravel road, and as long as there's dirt work in there, it's... I mean, well, and even longer than that, probably. I just don't want these people, and I'm not talking about the developer, I'm talking about the homeowners.
Sure.
Take... Have thoughts that we're buying this, and then after we build, it'll be blacktopped. It may be one day, but there's no plans, and we really just are not going to be able to at all as long as there's dirt movement.
Sure.
And a lot of these people are getting the dirt off that dirt pit to build their pads. So, hopefully, they understand that, that it is a gravel road.
What road is this, off of?
Stumpage.
Stumpage and Stoll.
Stoll, where they... It's where they come together. And there's two gravel roads. But anyhow, just clear, it's a gravel road and...
Sure.
Probably only one.
Not no short ones either.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, those are long.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion, Mr. Gaines.
They know that.
Yeah.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, to approve both A... Both B and C. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion?
Are they aware of that now, Steve? Is this something?
Every one of my men, I've tried, I mean, builders, developers, whoever, to...
Reenterate?
Yeah, that it's...
They're aware of it today. Don't forget it tomorrow.
When it gets muddy.
Yeah, right.
That's correct.
They get tired of washing that vehicle. Couple of rocks hit that windshield, they'll be ready to take a move on it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Mr. Schley. All right, if Mr. Schley comes forward on the public hearing, I remind those who are going to speak before the board, to try to keep this to a two to three-minute conversation on your comments. Thank you. All right, Mr. Schley.
Okay. First item under my section is a public hearing on the Carl Davis, Davis Aviation Inc. conditional permit, conditional use permit request. Old Highway 43 is District Four parcel. Mr. Davis is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 16,000-square-foot metal building on Old Highway 43 for his business, Davis Aviation Inc. The current operation is located on Jetport Road in three different buildings, and Mr. Davis would like to relocate to Old Highway 43 and have everything under one roof. There will be an office area, a warehouse area, an airplane hangar in the back of the building. Planes are to be disassembled, the parts are cleaned and painted, and then stop for resale or sale. Mr. Davis owns two parcels totaling 20 acres. The building would be placed on the front 9.70 acres, and property is owned A2. This time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Davis Aviation Inc. conditional use permit request. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone stepping forward to speak in opposition, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Mr. Gaines, is everything good on zoning and everything in your office?
Right, it is. We haven't had any calls.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B, Mr. Schley.
It's a public hearing on the Michael and Kelly Rains conditional use permit, 443 Old Highway 80. It's District Four. Michael and Kelly Rains are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a guest house at 443 Old Highway 80. They lived in a manufactured home until construction, their primary residence was completed in 2016, at which time the manufactured home was removed from the property. It's a 19.05 acre parcel zoned A2. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Michael and Kelly Rains conditional use permit. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone stepping forward to speak in opposition on this matter. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Mr. Gaines.
I'll make motion with proof.
Motion, Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. C, Mr. Schley.
This is a public hearing on the Albert Frith conditional use permit, 2118 Cleary Roads, District One property. Mr. Frith is seeking a conditional use permit to replace an existing manufactured home with a new 16-by-76 home at 2118 Cleary Road. So, this is a .432 acre parcel zoned R1B, and water and sewer is provided by Cleary. So, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Albert Frith conditional use permit. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make motion approved. I think it'll be a great improvement. Thank you all for doing it.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. D, Mr. Schley.
This is a public hearing on the Brandon and Regina Riley conditional use permit, King Collier Roads, District Four property. Brandon and Regina Riley are seeking a conditional use permit to place a new 47-by-76 modular home on King Collier Road. This is a 1.99 acre parcel zoned RE1. They have moved from Florida, and they purchased this land to be near their family. So, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Brandon and Regina Riley conditional use permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, so we will close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Mr. Gaines.
I make motion with proof.
Motion, Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please.
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing on the Petra Jenkins conditional use permit, 249 Bragg Street. This is District Two property. Petra Jenkins is seeking a conditional use permit to replace an existing manufactured home with a new double-wide at 249 Bragg Street. Ms. Jenkins was granted a conditional use permit to place a manufactured home on the property in 2016. That home was recently destroyed by fire. This is a 37.5 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned R1B. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Petra Jenkins conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Motion by Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. F, please, Mr. Schley.
This is a... The public hearing on the Steve Malding rezoning request, Wade Patrick Road, District Three. Mr. Malding is seeking and asking the board to rezone 52 acres, approximately 52 acres on Wade Patrick Road from A1 to RE1. Mr. Malding is proposing to subdivide the property into five large lots. The smallest lot will be 3.59 acres. Three of the lots will have frontage on Wade Patrick Road. The other two lots in the back will be owned by Mr. Malding and his son, and they will share an easement. Mr. Malding included a copy of the deed restrictions that will be placed on the property in his application. This time, we will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Steve Malding rezoning request. Anyone to speak in opposition?
I'm not really opposition. I just need to...
Can you come on up, sir, please, and please introduce yourself and tell us where you live?
Yes, my name is Maurice Causey, and I own property right beside it. This is the first time I've ever been in front of a board. My question is, on the sanitation-wise, is everything going to be underground? No holding ponds or nothing like that? So...
If you have any information on that, can you tell us?
I don't have any information, but generally, you know, with those large lots, the sewer system would be contained on that person's property. Now, they may have a spray system or something like that, but it wouldn't be a pond or a lagoon or something.
That would be a lagoon.
It wouldn't be, probably.
No, it would not be.
No, so it's just normal.
I don't think they allow those collection deals anymore anyway.
I hope not.
No, it's good you...
I've been in a neighborhood where the hell, and that's why I was kind of...
Yeah, they don't work.
Think that's back from the day, but anyway.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
I think as a matter of record, we can note... I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
Maurice Causey.
Okay. As a matter of note for the record, we will communicate back to the developer and confirm. And if Mr. Causey will give Ms. Lawrence his contact information, we'll get an answer on that. I think the answer will be satisfactory.
Somebody else up there. Come on up, ma'am. Please introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
I'm Wanda Brown at 1291 Wade Patrick Road.
Okay.
And my question is, will this five lots, will it be five people, I mean, families, whatever, living on these five lots, or is it possible to build an apartment on acreage or...
It's RE1, which is residential estate, minimum of one acre lots, one dwelling per lot. Mr. Malding agreed on the front end with the supervisor's help that he would restrict the development to no more than the number of lots that you see in the original plat, which is in the land records. A total of maybe six houses total, and all of the lots are de-restricted. They cannot be further subdivided. So, it will only be six houses out there.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Yes, and for the record, we got an email communication from someone who lives out of state and apparently owns property in the vicinity, we guess, who indicated some... That he was opposed to it because he didn't know enough about it. But I don't... It is... Is anyone who's sent in an email from out of state here? All right. So, we would just note that for the record that we did receive that. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition on this matter, or in favor of your way? We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr.... I want to commend the community development, Mr. Schley, and this board for being with these six public hearings in less than 10 minutes. It is a record, I do believe. I don't know where, Mr. Schley. I don't know where we're getting from. I think I probably just jinxed our set.
I was going to... Where do we go from here?
I think that was again, like, he wants the future, you know?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Well, that's simple. It will work that way.
Message received. Item G is a discussion of and potential approval as to form of all of the documents, and there is a mountain load of them, that are necessary to carry out the financing, funding, and construction of the new Rankin County Road Department maintenance facility. And so, we need the board to approve those as to form and to authorize the board president, the county administrator, to execute any and all documents contingent upon review and approval of the final form of the documents by legal counsel. And we have... Sue Fairbank here. Ms. Lynn is here. Thank you for being here. If y'all got any questions about where we are, sort of where we are in the process, now's the time to ask those. I'll just tell you that where we are in the process is, we have noticed the intent to move forward with this financing transaction as proposed at the last board meeting, or the one before. I lose track of time. And that process is underway. The contract... The form of the contract with the contractor is one of the documents that you are approving as to form. I think we're very close to having that satisfied and ready to go. Sue, we have recommendation on potential lender. Are we ready to talk about that? Can you come forward? Do you mind?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I have Lynn Norris here, who's going to go through the bids that were received, but we do have a lender who we think is a good bid for y'all, so he's going to go through it with you.
We had four bids received. The lowest bid was from People's Bank in Richland. They had an average coupon rate of a 313.6, 3.136. The NIC rate was a 327. The next lowest bid was Regent's Bank. They had an average coupon of a 361, net interest cost of a 364. They were followed by Priority One Bank. They had an interest rate of a 368, average coupon, net interest cost of a 371. And Bancorp South submitted the final bid. Their average coupon was 430, net interest cost was 439. The lowest and best interest rate was from People's Bank in Richland there, so that would be our recommendation going forward. So that would be our recommendation going forward.
So like I said, there are a number of documents that are before you as to form. They're in the packet, and we need to massage some of the, the details with the contracts and make sure we get those like we like them. So your, your action today would be to approve the documentation as to form, to authorize the board president and North County administrator, as the case may be, to execute the documents on your behalf, once legal counsel is satisfied with the documents.
Is there a motion to appoint or grant People's Bank this opportunity?
I move.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
So we'll have a resolution, Bob, that will need to be executed after the board meeting, and the resolution will lay out exactly what you've done today. The documentation will be later.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
H.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. This is a discussion of and potential action to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding. I'm looking at Mr. Buster. He may, I don't know if he's gonna have to move or not. Y'all may have to just hear him from over there. With the Office of State Aid Road Construction with respect to the FY 2019, bridge inspection of designated bridges in Rankin County. We got a notification from State Aid that there would be a change, a slight change in the way that bridge inspection is conducted. It appears, I'm just making, this is editorial, appears that there's some upward, there's some downward pressure from FHWA coming down through State Aid about bridge conditions. I, you know, I speculated that some of this may be going on with some of the recent activity with bridge issues in Mississippi, but apparently those things aren't mutually exclusive. We're not, we're not trying to tie any of that together. How it affects us is this. State Aid has monies that come from FHWA for bridge inspection, so it's federal money that comes down pipe through State Aid. And typically, what has happened in the past, you guys, through your county consulting engineer, have had bridges in Rankin County inspected, Mr. Buster, over a hundred, a hundred and five.
Yes, sir. Generally about a hundred and five.
Right. And so in the past, there's been, essentially, there's been a flat fee for bridge inspections in Rankin County. Mr. Buster's handled that using a third-party bridge inspection outfit that has expertise in bridges.
Much expertise, yes.
Now, in order to get our hands on the FHWA bridge inspection funds, we have to do it their way. And they want, they, State Aid wants to be in charge of the contract for the bridge inspectors. So they are asking you to now decide who it is that you would like to recommend to State Aid to serve as your bridge inspection outfit. And they will enter into a contract with whom you recommend. Okay? So, Mr. Buster, you may want to speak about this, since it was always a handoff thing anyway.
Right. This is something, yes. We've been doing it for years and years, and we've been utilizing this organization to assist us in bridge inspection. Last county I had, they did inspections on nearly half of the counties in the state. But anyway, they're good. This will not take Rankin County out of the picture totally in one way, but in the other way, it will. I would still serve, assuming you would want me to, I would still be the Rankin County contact with the bridge inspection folks in State Aid. State Aid will enter into a contract with who you recommend, and I'm gonna recommend this firm that we've been using for years and years. They'll enter into a contract with them, and State, and Rankin County is just kind of off to the side, watching it, see how everything goes. And we would represent the county in, in that, that particular phase, but.
What's just the purpose of all? Why is all this coming up?
I wish I could totally answer that, and I can't. There's so much attention on bridges now. Understandable. So they've gone through another process, and like this team that I'm gonna recommend to you, I mean, that's what they are. They have a team. There's about five different categories that they want you to have someone qualified to do in various bridge inspections. So, you know, I don't think any, some county engineers may bite the bullet and do it themselves. I think they're asking for an awful lot of trouble. They need somebody that's in the, in the business, 'cause you, this, this contractor that I'm gonna recommend to you, they have to have people who are totally knowledgeable in several facets of bridge construction and bridge repair. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. It's kind of a, a new game, and, and the cost is going up. We used, we've always done them for about three, I don't remember now, three hundred dollars, three fifty a bridge, something like that. And it's, it's going up tremendously. With our last bridge con.
Our State Aid. So here's. Are you, are you at the end of what you want to tell them, Mr. Buster? Go ahead and finish.
Well, I guess I was. You shut me up.
No, what's it going to?
What I was, what I was gonna say, just to give you an idea of the transition in this thing, our last bridge contract, the total dollars, you know, three hundred and fifty bucks a bridge, something, was about forty-three thousand dollars. They're estimating that this next one to be two hundred to three hundred thousand. So it's a, a big jump, and a lot of that has to do because of the, of the bridge expertise that they are requiring in this contract between State Aid and the contract.
We didn't have a bridge that failed, right?
No, sir.
Did not have.
No.
And we're gonna be more economical and go from forty-something thousand to, so we can get the state involved.
No, what it is, though, what it is, in some of these meetings, that's what they're, they're requiring certain ones to do it. Isn't that correct?
Well, if they qualify, yes.
But they, and they, they've run the cost way up per bridge. That's what the whole state's complaining about.
Yes. Now, the feds will pay, will pay for that. I think that's something maybe what the attorney was fixing to touch on. The feds will pay for it. If funds become short in paying for this, then the cost of it will come out of the State Aid allotment to Rankin County. Now, if there's not enough money in the State Aid allotment to Rankin County, then Rankin County has to foot the bill.
Why, why, why do we want to give up letting you do it? It's you charge us a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and now we're gonna go to this other firm. Are you not wanting to do it anymore?
So.
The requirements that they have on it now, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing it.
This is about documentation and paperwork that has not been required before.
Yes.
FHWA is saying, we want a notebook on every bridge. And in the past, what they've gotten is a memo.
So we really don't have a choice then?
If you want the FHWA allotment of bridge inspection funding, you have to do it their way.
That's correct.
Looks to me like, though, we could pay forty-three thousand a year and tell them to get out of Rankin County, or we can go with their deal, and in, in four years, we're gonna be paying the two hundred and forty thousand, because there's not gonna be enough federal money, and we're gonna run through the State Aid. And this.
Well, that's, that's a good point. And that, since we've not had any fail, then why couldn't we continue with just what we're doing? Because we're keeping our bridges up. We're keeping our, our bridge village where it needs to be.
So how it's gonna work here?
We'll lose our fund?
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
Wait, we'll lose what funding?
The State Aid funding.
Well, no. I thought you'd lose, you mean you're gonna lose State Aid funding if you don't go this route?
Let me tell you what I anticipate is gonna happen.
But it wouldn't be just for bridge?
So, so here's what, here's how it works. This is known as the federal bludgeon. Okay? FHWA says, everybody shall provide us with a big old notebook on every bridge. We're gonna help you get that done. We're gonna help you pay for that, but you will do it. We'll either help you pay for it, and you'll do it, or you'll do it on your own, and you can pay for it on your own. But either way, you gotta have the notebook. Mr. Bust, Mr. Buster's telling you, we don't have people at Engineering Services who can do the notebook. So we gotta go outside. In the past, we haven't had to have the notebook. We've only had to have the one-page memo. In the past, we've been able to do that for three hundred dollars a bridge. If they want the notebook, we're gonna be doing it for three thousand a bridge. Okay? So either we do it like that and get the money from FHWA by following their process, or we turn it over to Mr. Buster, and either way, you're still paying two hundred. Are you gonna use FHWA's two hundred? Or you're gonna pay Mr. Buster the two hundred, because he's gonna have to go hire people who can create the notebook?
That's exactly what basically was said at some of the conferences, and that's what they've done, is take it away from you. And in the same words they used, three hundred dollars and paying somebody over here thirty, thirty-five hundred to do this, been trained and as they were pinned down in like a two-week crash course training course to come in and do what these engineers have been doing, has infuriated the whole engineer group.
We, we see what's happening.
Nothing was ever said that you will lose, nothing's ever been brought up before that you would lose State Aid funding if you didn't go this route.
Yeah, they're, they're not gonna tell you that on the front end here. It's just, they're gonna wait and see who got us the notebooks, and they're gonna look down through there. At some point, they're gonna say, well, Rankin County ain't getting us no notebooks. So we're gonna hold up any State Aid funding as a way of forcing their hand. So it's not gonna just be.
Even if we don't have any bridges that fail, they're gonna come in and inspect our non, our compliance bridges.
I guarantee you, they're gonna hang up some other aspect of State Aid funding. Not just bridge. So what you're.
Is this an annual or is this a term?
I assume it's gonna be annual. That's what we've had in the past, and they're just changing the, the way that it's gonna run.
Well, they don't give a four million every four years, right?
Do what now? State Aid, you're talking about the allotment?
Yeah.
The, the allotment to Rankin County is approximately four million dollars. There is a formula.
But it figures out about four million a year. I mean, about four million every four years.
A turn.
Yeah.
So that is thinking a million dollars away from us.
Yeah, takes almost half, a little less than half.
Yeah, so the, the bridge funding from FHWA is a separate item. That's not part of your four million. Okay?
Right.
The, the bridge funding through FHWA is not a part of your four million.
It's not coming out of that four million.
It's, it's separate funding from FHWA. You just gotta do it their way.
But, but I think if we don't do it, it'll come out of that four million.
It will.
Yes, sir.
It will, but I'm saying, yeah, but that's, I'm saying, don't get confused that that's automatically coming out of the four million.
No, but eventually.
No, it's, it's not.
So let's assume that we move forward. We say, okay, we're gonna do it this way. We're gonna get them a notebook, and, and we're gonna use the bridge funding through FHWA to pay for that. They come back later and say, well, your bridges are a little testy, and it took a whole lot more, and, and we're gonna need to dip into some of your State Aid funding, general funding, and maybe the four million dollars. We're gonna need to dip into that. That's after you clear all of the FHWA funding. Then if there's something left over, it's potentially gonna come out of there. And the worst-case scenario is, you don't have enough in your, in your four million left to cover a shortfall, and you will be asked at that time, it's, it's very clear in the documentation, you're not being asked to agree to it on the front end. You'll be asked at that time to make it up from whatever funding sources you have available. So that's the structure of how we're doing this. I, I don't see a way of round it. Because e, either way we go here, they're, they're going to get the notebook, and we can either use their money to help pay for that, or we can do it ourselves.
Well, but to be clear, this is no repair, reconstruct, this is just a inspection.
That's correct.
Doesn't, doesn't fix a bridge at all.
No.
Right.
It's just a study.
And this is, this is something obviously they're doing. I mean, why weren't we brought into this before when this, all this bridge inspection went on, and so many failed, and they were having these three thousand dollar guys go in and inspect those? Where did we, how did we skip through at that time? That was the past year.
That was on timber bridges, I think, what you're talking about, timber bridges.
Well, I mean, what do you call them?
Timber, oh, timber bridges.
Timber bridge, oh. Okay. That may be, and I don't know.
Yeah. It's just that they, they are requiring a, a certain expertise in this.
And it's, and it doesn't matter if they're, they have no federal money in it, there's only county money in those bridges start with. Isn't that correct?
That's pretty much correct, yes.
How many bridges we have in the county that are strictly county-funded, county inspe, everything has been county.
That's why I refer to it as bludgeon.
That is, yeah.
They're beating you over the head with a federal reg that they don't provide appropriate funding.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's talked at every conference, every.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So you get to comply with their standards, and they, they throw the carrot out there, we will help you. But oh, by the way, if it's short, it's gonna come out of your pocket, but you still have to do it.
Then you get on TV and say, maybe your engineers need to go back to school? That's exactly what came out.
That's, there's a lot of truth to that because of the amount of expertise that you have to have to do this. You know, we could, Engineering Services could gear up and get a team for bridge inspection, but just for Rankin County, it would not pay. I'd go broke doing it, and I'm not interested in doing it for any other counties.
Well, let me ask you, what, um, they, they made the comment that these, whomever was inspecting, that this came from more than one person and was multiple.
Sure.
That they had, uh, they had only had a short weeks, a few weeks of training for this. Is it possible that you would have somebody that could, we could, you could have, and to go through the same courses?
Well, under the program, there are several positions that you have to have in these bridge inspections, and there's no doubt Engineering Services could do that. But it ends up being, I do these inspections on Rankin County, and what am I gonna do with these people that have been trained for the rest of the time? You say, well, you can go do some more counties. Engineering Services is interested in Rankin County.
I got you. They're, they're doing, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're interested in satisfying Rankin County, and that's all.
So Mr. Buster's.
Go out and inspect others.
Got a recommend, he's got a recommendation for you guys.
I got it.
That will be for the purpose of identifying back to State Aid, saying, we would like for you to talk to these folks to be under contract to handle the Rankin County bridge inspection.
Right. State Aid will actually negotiate a contract with whoever gets it. And I'm gonna recommend to you this morning that you use Tadlock Bridge Inspection Services LLC.
Well, let me ask you. You know, it's almost like to, to feel like you're doing your job or justify your job. I mean, it doesn't matter if any of us that know what we're inspecting and looking for can find the problem, whether it's small or large. Aren't we running into a situation just like that, that they're gonna find something just so they, to justify their, them being hired?
Well, I can, I can tell you that this firm won't do that. I don't know about the others, how they will function and so forth.
That's what I'm asking.
But we've had a long working relationship with these people, and I've got total confidence as if they were one of my regular employees. I have no problem with them.
How many farms are out there, Buster, that biggest kind of work?
Well, I don't really know. Probably five or six. Some county engineers are gonna try it. So I wouldn't include them in it, so there's not that many, because it's a specialized service, and you, pretty much, to stay in that business, you got to do that all the time. That's what you do. You're in the bridge inspection business. Forget everything else. And that's the reason, we, we just wouldn't be interested. I hate to turn down money, but I think in the long run, it would end up costing me money.
I, I can see it if it's only been one county. I can understand that.
Yes, because.
I think it's a little dangerous from the standpoint, we're glad Tadlock know you're our guy, you know, and I don't, you know, there's nothing that hoes them to any kind of financial ceiling or whatever.
State Aid will negotiate a contract with them. In other words, the county's not gonna be involved in that. State Aid is gonna negotiate all the contracts on these bridge inspections.
What is that contract for? What's the term of it? Is it like every other?
They haven't noted, they haven't given us a form of the agreement. It's their agreement. They're simply saying, hey, y'all tell us who you want us to talk to.
Well, you know, our concern is, we wanna get the best price we can. I mean, that's what we're all sitting there thinking, I'm sure.
Sure.
It's very open-ended to say, Tadlock on the front end, not saying, give us, you know, you got five or six firms out there for the state, you know, and you negotiate the best price you can with all of them to do, cover the areas. That, you know, I mean, I don't know.
This is what they've indicated to us.
Negotiate. They're the ones, we're recommending them, but they're the ones, still gotta work it out.
That's right. They've gotta be satisfied with the numbers themselves, being State Aid.
I guess the work was in their budget. They've got set aside to do that for them.
I'm, I'm okay with doing the, and the reason, I guess the reason is trusting you in just what I had asked, and I, I trust you in what you're, you're saying, is not just go out Is not just go out there looking to find something to make a statement.
Correct.
And, and I think that's what happened, uh, over the last couple of years is these, they went out there because I, I've heard the remarks were made and the way things were handled. And it, uh, appears to me that a lot of that went on very small things, but all of a sudden it was, we're making a statement. We're here and your guys don't know what you're doing.
And the theory under these new inspections, it's those small things lead to big things.
Yeah.
I mean, this, bridges have really become a top priority period paragraph.
I understand.
They have.
We're trying to put you guys, you know, in, into a state of awareness that there's a possibility that it could impact county funding at some point. But it's, it's about the third domino that has to fall. You got FHWA money, then you've got state aid funding, then you're into county funding, uh, if you get to that point.
Craig, let me ask one question. There's, I thought they called a special session coming up.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
To discuss this topic especially.
I think, I think they're, yeah.
Are we smart enough to wait till after the special session to make that decision to see if somebody else gets a bunch of pushback on the same board?
We've got to have it in, uh, by the end of the month.
Yeah. August, August 5th is our deadline.
I guess my thing is if we could ask for an extension based on the special session side to see.
They're not doing it till August.
Yeah, send August. I don't know what the date is.
And this is a federal mandate. This is not a state mandate. This is coming down the feds, right?
I just didn't know if the state might come in to see, because other people have the same issues on the state aid money. Does the legislature do anything to assist in that or is this something we could still pull out on if it changes through legislative action?
It would be nice to know what the term of the contract is, you know, as far as how long period of time that we're gonna be.
Yeah, they didn't give us any information. I, maybe they will if we ask, Jay, but it's, it's a state aid contract with this third part.
And normally it's an annual, you know, it's what it's been. I think they're trying to hold to an annual type contract. Uh, you inspect a hundred bridges this year, you inspect a hundred bridges next year.
I mean, it'd be nice to know if we had that option, like something, we're not, you know, satisfied with the service. If we truly get to offer the one we wanted to do business with, then it'd be nice to know we have that, yeah.
To, to put a bow on this thing, you can see sort of what's, uh, what's happening here.
Oh, yeah.
Is this desire to wanna centralize this issue of what is the condition of bridges? They wanna centralize that in one spot so you don't get eighty-two different versions of what's a passable bridge. That, that's, that's my take on what's happening here. Centralize it, put state aid in charge of it. We're gonna hire the inspector and contract with the inspector. And they're gonna report to us the condition of the bridge and it's all gonna be uniform in terms of what gets reported.
Well, I didn't know the, the reporting problem was the issue. I thought it was the lack of funding problem was the issue.
I, I think, I think it's exactly what's going on, but the, the issue becomes, you know, how do we know? I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of the legislature. How do we know that Chickasaw County has as bad a problem with their bridge as they claim? Because we've never seen any reports. We've seen a one-page paragraph that says this bridge doesn't look like it's in good shape.
And I'm sure vice versa too. There's probably a lot of bridges out there that have been passed and all of a sudden, boom.
Correct.
You got a catastrophic issue here. How come it hadn't been done prior to that? So on both sides. What's the pleasure of the board? I think we've hit this thing hard enough. What would y'all like to do?
I'm okay with going with his recommendations, two reasons. One, I trust what he's saying and what they're, the way they're handling things. And the other is the fact that he's got a history of a working relationship with them. I feel like possibly maybe if he wanted, would communicate with Engineering Services.
Yes, because in the, in the memorandum, not only do you list who you're recommending, which I recommended to you, Tadlock Bridge Services LLC. But also a representative of the county to be in these communications and I am recommending to you that you put my name in there.
Uh, the recommendation for Mr. Parker is Tadlock Engineering Services.
Tadlock Bridge Services LLC.
Services LLC as, as the point, as, as the person doing the inspections and recommending that he be put as the contact person on behalf of Rankin County with this process. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, is there a second? I second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with doing it. I would just, if there's a way we can find out what the term is, it'd be nice if we have that luxury, uh, de novo.
I mean, our next board needs, our next board needs when? The second, the third, something like that?
We've got a, we've got a work session.
We're not gonna.
It's gotta be in by August 5th, right?
I mean, I know we're gonna go with them. I, I just wanna know.
The term would be quite significant.
Yeah, I mean, if they, this is a, you know, one and done, I might wanna give a little more consideration, you know?
You mean like this is the only one we'll ever have a choice?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's a good point.
There's gotta be a foundation to start this process. That's why everybody's gotta start the process. Hopefully, common sense will prevail. The next time they do it, you wouldn't have to reinvent the book every time that you have a more narrow scope going out there to go do, but.
I don't.
But that's the federal government.
We got much choice.
I don't think you do either. I mean.
I'm totally not against it, but I don't see we have much choice.
No, either. Consider talking all day long about term and whatever, but at the end of the day, we're against the law.
I'd like to know if this is.
Why can't we? Another, another state and or federal mandate being pushed down on us to solve.
We're gonna meet before our deadline, right? So why don't?
Second is the deadline's the fifth.
We're, we're, we're a work session.
August the second. That's after end of the month.
Yeah, but it's not, it don't have to be end of the fifth.
I think August 5th is our date.
August 5th is the date.
We're gonna confirm that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, I think there's still, I think there's some confusion in that all this is, state aid would be authorized to negotiate with Tadlock.
Right.
Okay, th- there's a set of bridges for this inspection. That's what they'll be negotiating on. So based on which bridges it is, it would vary, that the cost would vary. If you had a lot of big, long bridges, it would take more time. Obviously, the, the cost of the contract's gonna go up. So I can't imagine this obligating the county for more than this one inspection.
No.
If, if next time we were dissatisfied with a bridge inspection, we could recommend somebody else, the contract's gonna have to be renegotiated with Tadlock every year because the bridges are different every year. It's not the same.
Let's find, let's find that out.
Yeah. We meet the end of the month.
Right.
August 2nd. August 2nd, okay.
It's not due to the fifth.
So we can turn it in at the second, can't we?
Real briefly, this is from Kerry Webb, the prior state aid engineer, when he sent this out. Makes the comments to what Mr. Parker said about the forty-three eighty we've paid before, going up somewhere between one eighty-four to forty-four. After that, it says, it is expected that over time inspection costs will decrease and stabilize as inspection and low rating information for each structure is completed. As stated in the memorandum, understanding is anticipate the federal funding will be utilized to pay for these inspections. I wonder before August the 5th if they need to, you know, comment.
So it's going up a hundred grand.
Understand, creating the notebook is gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
And then next year, we stick in an addendum or two and we hope that that go, keeps going down because we're just adding pages to the notebook.
That's right. There's a hundred, about a hundred and ten, fifteen bridges and I have a list of them here that will be inspected. And once you go through this new inspection cycle, then hopefully to address what Jay was getting at a little bit. When the next cycle comes around, the inspection should be, I'll say, easier, but some of the, some of the work will already have been done in this, this first inspection. Am I making sense at all?
You are, Buster, but how many times have you seen somebody come in here and ask for any, whether it's just, we need fifty thousand dollars, uh, to get off the ground. We're gonna get grant monies and in five years, you won't give us, and in five years, you're giving them five hundred thousand.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
I've never seen it go the other direction.
I'm gonna argue that.
Even heard of it going the other direction.
Especially since they already got the business, right?
I, I think that there ought to be some room at the top for the counties that had no bridges that failed to be exempt. I mean, all we're doing is sharing in the cause for all these people that hadn't taken care of their bridges. To get their studies paid for. But anyhow, I digress.
All right.
Well, y'all want to.
There is a motion, a second on the floor, uh, any more discussion?
Can we amend it to deal with it on the second?
Sir?
Can we address?
What's gonna happen between now and the second? You gotta make some.
Definitive, uh.
Definitive what?
Information as far as.
I'm fine with that.
Term of the contract.
Term of, the term of the contract, what you need to know.
Yeah.
So anything else that Buster needs to go get, you know?
If it's more than one year.
The reason the term is so big, the reason the term is so big is from what Buster said. Year four, if everything were to work out the way they say, we should be paying twenty-five percent of what they're saying, that the term, meaning the dollar of the contract. So if we agreed to the contract at two hundred thousand, then we're gonna pay that for four years. Three hundred, whatever, three hundred thousand. Where if it's one year, then we can negotiate maybe and say, no, 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 y'all told us.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
It'd be adding a page by year four and we should be at fifty percent or twenty-five.
Just to make sure, ju- just to make sure that we're all on the same page. FHWA through a separate funding item that the county's not gonna get anyway, will pay for this.
Yes.
That if funding is available, you just say.
Well, it's, it's available.
It's going, it's going to state aid and state aid will remit it from those federal funds to Tadlock, if that's who you choose. Under the terms of that contract, they'll remit it.
But that's, that's.
You'll never see it.
But that's for this year.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what we want to find out, I think, for what they're asking.
Yeah, so we expect that the funding mechanism, the FHWA bridge inspection funding mechanism will continue through the, through the, uh, the substance of the agreement. I, I'm with Mr. Buster. Well, I'm almost a hundred percent confident we're gonna find out is that this is a one-year deal and it tracks whatever funding comes in during that cycle. Next year, if there's no FHWA bridge funding, we won't, there won't be no contract. We'll be back to some other arrangement.
Yes.
To try to figure out how we're gonna get bridges inspected and how we're gonna get paid for them.
Well, I think that's what they want to know and I agree is this one year because they don't want, because we know state aid can't do that. Just say, well, okay, it's set now, but you're gonna have to pay for it now.
Yeah, they very well could do that.
So.
And we want, we don't want, I agree with Jay, we don't wanna be in a four-year deal.
Right.
Where we know on the front end, there's no possibility that years two, three and four, there's gonna be any funding. So we'll, we'll get clarification on that. If I could ask.
And they referred to this, Craig, as, as the two thousand eighteen, that's two thousand nineteen, bridge inspection.
So it's FY nineteen, bridge inspection process.
What is it you want us to do now, Mr. Slade?
If, if I could get, let's see if we can do it like this. So, uh, I would ask that, Jared, that we revise the motion to, to delay providing the agreement until we find out what the term of the contract is to be.
Yeah.
We simply delay submitting it. It's, it's approved.
Yeah.
But it's pending getting that information.
I would say it's pending a one year.
Yes.
Because even if, if it's four and we know, I don't wanna vote for it.
Right, yes. So we, there will, nothing will be submitted until we've satisfied everybody that it's a one-year deal.
Eighteen nineteen, fiscal year nineteen.
FY nineteen and that's it. Okay, are we okay with that?
Yes, you're amending your motion for that.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
I'll second that amendment. That amended the motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
We will get confirmation.
Next, Mr. Slade, don't get us bogged down on this one like the last one now.
All right. I accrued a lot of credit on those first six public hearings there. Authorization to publish notice of public comment. This, this is asking you to authorize publication of the notice of public comment period and the notice of public hearing on a request that has come to amend the Rankin County Solid Waste Management Plan. That's been filed by Southern Environmental Group, Inc. Mr. Foshee and his counselor here today, if you have any questions on this. You would also be authorizing action to set the public comment period for July twenty-five through September four. And then you would be acting to set the public hearing for September four, twenty eighteen at nine AM. This, this part of the process. Mr. Foshee came before you. We get, we granted him a conditional use permit. Uh, he needed that. Uh, and this is a twenty-acre piece of property that's adjacent to the rubbish pit that's on Mount Helm. This would be adding capacity there. So it's a separate piece of property. It's only accessed through his existing property. There'd be no access directly to Mount Helm. On that basis, we granted the conditional use. That was the first step. This is the second step. We've gotta amend the solid waste management plan to account for this twenty acres being brought online under our waste management plan as a class-two rubbish pit addition to that. Is it class-two or one? Class-one rubbish pit, which is even better. All right, so that's what you're doing. You're just setting the comment period. You're setting a public hearing for September four.
I make a motion, we set it.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I've got one additional item. It's, it's, it could be informational, but I wanna put it in front of you and see if you wanna take action. This is on our food truck out on, uh, I don't know.
Really? Why are you bringing that up?
I'm sorry, but we got to. So, uh, so what happened was you extended.
Nobody mentioned it. Why aren't we talking about it?
Because we have some parameters that we gotta stay within. Uh, we, uh, we, at, when was it? Was it last August, September?
It's been so quiet, I forgot.
October, October 2nd is when they extended it.
That's right, October 2nd. Uh, we had the matter before you because we were getting ready to look at adding some additional requirements to our food truck vending ordinance. Uh, and so this was all kind of wadded up at the same time. Y'all extended the permit, the original permit. And we adopted amendments to the food truck ordinance to allow for permit fees and some other things. And he needs to apply for a food truck vending permit under the new ordinance. That was the reason why we extended it. We were getting that all done. We finally got it done and now it's time for him to come forward. We put notices out there. Come get another permit. Come ask for another permit. Get compliant. We put notice after notice out there for him. No response. I wrote him recently and said, we gotta hear something from you and if we don't, we're gonna assume that you don't want a permit and we're going to ask the board to revoke the prior permit. So I'm, I'm putting it in front of you. He's been put on notice to get compliant and we've not heard anything at all.
Okay.
So that's where we are.
Point. Go by, CM.
Cause he's wide open servant. So I mean, I'll, I'll go by. I'll go by and find him.
So there, there's a, a permit fee. There is an application process. There's. It, it's, it's not that we don't want to keep saying you can't do it. We just want him to be compliant with our ordinance, okay? So we need your help on that and he's not responsive to, to the notifications that we've been putting out there.
How, how have you been doing it? Through letter mail or?
Well, and I, I, I wrote a certified mail.
Did he get it?
No, I, I don't know. I haven't got the green card back yet.
Do you have a number for him, Mr. Renee? I'll get it from you also.
Anything else, Mr. Slade?
I hope not.
Ms. Oster.
Yes, the first item I have is one of Jay's favorite items here.
I'm pretty sure I loaded against this last time.
Approval for Rankin County to enter an annual computer software support agreement with Delta Computer Systems, um, and to execute the documents. These are the classifications that they are going up this year.
Yeah, I noticed. They went up last year too. Remember that?
So what, what, what's your, what's your, you're a computer guru, Mr. Slade.
Oh, yeah, no.
La- last year they did request for some increases. There were a few of them. For some reason, they did not go up on last year, even though they requested the increase. Some of them they did, some they didn't, even after asking.
What about Mr. Gaines in our negotiations with him?
Yeah, they are the only game in town, so let's move forward.
What else can we do?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Well, what are our choices?
Oh, I mean, seriously, our, our staff has no desire to be changing software, so we need to just move on and prove it. Yeah, I don't have to like it, but, you know.
Well, I mean.
Making that motion?
If you, if you.
Motion, Mr. Fisher, second.
If you don't wanna vote for it, but why, why, I mean, what are we doing wrong here? What's the reason?
It's just that.
It costs an arm and a leg to make the bid.
And if you look at what we have and compare them to other counties across the state, they charge us considerably more than they do other counties and we run the same software.
Okay, then what's the answer? What can we do to put a hole to the feet of the fire?
Nothing. There's not. The only, the only carrot that you have is the possibility of change.
But there's nobody changed.
That's right. Laura's ready to quit already, you know?
I thought she already quit.
Motion of my Mr. Fisher, this is her second. I second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Beam, Ms. Oster.
Approval of central bidding is Rankin County's electronic and reverse auction bid vendor. Approval of central bidding as Rankin County's electronic and reverse auction bid vendor. This does not require any kind of a contract, there is no cost to the county. There will be a charge to the vendor that is registered, forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per transaction, per bid time, doesn't, if they bid four times, it's still the same amount, you know, if they reduce their bid, they only pay that one time per bid that we're going to take.
Motion approved, second.
Somebody here, you made a motion?
Yep.
Most of Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed, like sign, motion carries. C, Ms. Oster?
This is authority to pay J H and H Architects for their services on architectural and construction administration phase, and this is for our new courthouse facility in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Authority to issue that check.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed, like sign, motion carries. B, please, ma'am.
Authority to pay J H and H Architects in the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three, and this is on the misdemeanor facility, and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Most of Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed, like sign, motion carries.
That's all.
Additional business to be discussed?
Um, this is basically just to let y'all know that our solid, our waste management contract renews for a three-year term, October one, this is to let you know that date, it will have an auto renewal just in case that y'all have any questions or wanna do any thing differently now would be the time. If not, it will renew on its own.
Three year.
Three years for a three-year period?
Three years.
For an additional three-year period.
Do y'all have a preference, or y'all wanna be prepared to discuss it on August second?
Well, I mean, do we wanna go out for bids?
We've had no communication with them about going up.
Okay.
If the contract does not propose.
Any increase, other than their annual CPI.
CPI, Chris.
I'm okay. I mean, a few hiccups we've had.
One of the few hiccup, Miss Janice over here rides it down and, you know.
Few little hiccups I've had, they've been able to take care of, yeah.
I swear, man, I wish I could get people to. All right, apparently there's no other discussion there, it's still not an issue, Ms. Oster. Anything else for additional business?
I have just one question. Uh, Mike, the, you, to, the star of Star Brown and Rose, are they back working on it?
About to start today, all right?
Okay, all right, that's where I can answer some emails. Boy, leave that thing milled out and drive off at the railroad track?
We're gonna, we're gonna take care of that next time, right, we're gonna contract, we're not gonna let that happen.
That's hard, right there.
Welcome to my world now. Hey.
Mr. Slay, you got something else you need to add?
I've got additional business also, if I can, just a second. Uh, Mike, I wanna talk about that concrete bid deal we have, we're having, and Slay, you may need to have, give us some guidance on this. Trying to get, we've been trying to get, on our six-month bid, we awarded people to do concrete workforce. And I can't remember if they were, or whatever it was. All right, so we're having the most god-awful time getting our concrete people that we've awarded bids on for three months now to do any kind of concrete work on curb, so it delays everything else from asphalt to other roadwork or stuff like that, because we can't get our awarded bid on concrete people to act, even the secondary side of that.
Oh, really?
What type of action can we take to get totally out of dealing with, who is our concrete work with?
Uh, we have A G R and Bulldog.
All right, so how do I get away from those two contractors that don't wanna do any work for us in Rankin County? We begged them for three months, we can't get them to act.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, if we, if we rule them out, what are we gonna do about the future?
Well, my thing is, I don't care if y'all wanna use them for future projects, if you can get them to work, I wanna be able to go to a third one, I need to get somebody where they work.
Somebody will come in, I mean, I was gonna say.
I believe so, yes, yes, so I guess.
It sounds like this is gonna cost us more money, get Bulldog and whoever it is, they, they just found out they've got burned on the last job, and then I can't do the work for what they've got a contract about, right?
Is that what it is?
I'm just guessing, that would be the.
I guess my point, I'm fixing to miss my window on getting these roads done, and it's all gonna be hinged on these people that won't come do this concrete work for me.
I mean, it's, it's just like our asphalt or anything else, I mean, everybody bids our stuff, it's fill-in, we're fill-in work, you know, I mean, I'm just gonna say it on the record, that we are fill-in.
I, I need some kind of provision that will allow us, we gotta ask them for, like, getting a two-week notice, three-week notice, I need something to where I can get a contractor to do concrete work, or I'm fixing to miss my entire window on doing this work.
What we're saying, though, what they're saying, though, they don't know they're gonna get another one, come in and do it for, for that low price that they bid it for, is that right? I, I don't know.
We don't, we don't know, I guess the point is, right now, we're hostage under these people, and we can't do anything. So now I'm gonna miss all this work that I can get done during the summer if I don't get something done. So I need some kind of guidance on how to get rid of the people that we've awarded these six-month bids to and act with someone else to get it done.
Subject to further refinement, but my thought right now is that we would file a, a really quick petition, probably in county court, and ask Ms. Gary McDaniel to consider the methodology, I'm looking back here to Bridget, see what, what we may have put on our purchase orders. We put a deadline on, Ms. Bridget, typically.
We ain't, we can't even get, we can't even.
We can't even get, we can't even get them to give us a quote to do the work, that's how bad it is.
Okay, so that.
It's even worse than that.
Yeah, so that, that's probably actually better. Yeah. Right, that's. Yes, ma'am.
So that's justification enough, isn't it, huh?
It is, I, I'm, I'm looking for the protection of a court order that we would want in order to avoid a later argument that we somehow deviated from our standard annual bid process, okay? I, I don't want anything to come back later and say, "Y'all never even tried." We, we will have the documentation in hand to show we've made communication effort after communication effort to know.
What is the issue that they did?
We've got, we've got concrete work that needs to be done in several sections.
But I mean, what, guys, why, why don't they wanna deal with us now?
It could be to where they're too busy, they don't want the money, they made too much money, I don't know, so.
It's paying bigger money.
Okay. Other jobs.
Was it curb or gutter and sidewalk?
It, it's really, it's only just curbs, is really what it is, it's just straight curb work, I can't, we've got a small window.
But we can't pave until we get the curb work done.
And I've got the window, the time of the year to do it.
And only District Two has those kind of things, you know, so.
Which is why it's really important, which is why it's such a pressing issue right now, but.
Concrete.
Hey, hey, how about concrete work over there, tell him, Mike?
You got it, huh?
Yeah, so he just seconded my deal to kill whatever we gotta do.
Daniel's overprobing your district?
No, but I.
Okay, never mind.
It, it's the only subdivision we got over there, you know?
We renegotiate our attorney fee.
We're gonna get a court order for that too, I think.
I retract that.
All right, Mr. Slay, what was your submission here?
What can we do?
So here's what I would suggest that we do, let me file a quick petition. Serve both of these guys, Bulldog and H R squared, with it. And ask the court to, by order, to declare that they are no longer, they are no, we are no longer subject to them under our annual bid requirement. And we will work, Mike and Bridget and I will work together about how then we go back out and look for alternate.
And you're also adding there that you will no longer be able to bid work?
Yeah, I don't think you want to do that.
No, we, no, we can just not award them, we can just.
We don't have any people that does that kinda work?
That's right.
Can we, rather than doing that?
They're not doing it now.
I mean, something to make them get off the stick, get out there and get it done, is what I'm talking about.
So the next time we have an annual bid, where we ask for foam product on curb, if they show up and bid, we will notate, nah, you've had your chance, and our history with you justifies us rejecting your bid.
That's correct, can we not, before we go to this measure, notify them that we're about to take this step?
For two months, Mike, Mike can't get him a call-in back, he's been trying for two months to get him a call-in back.
Let the attorney, let Craig tell them, this is what we're fixing to do unless we're something out.
Actually, I would prefer just to, just to sue them, because they will know we're up to something when the deputy hands them the.
Okay, will they come, can they come in and do the work then, is what I'm getting at?
They may wanna do some work in the future, we may, we may need them to do work in the future.
I, we need them now.
I understand, but I, rather than just cutting them out altogether permanently.
I guess my point is, we had this problem last year, we thought we got it corrected. He's been trying for two months, we can't even get a quote, and I'm fixing to miss the window to do this area, and. Okay, I, well, here's my thing, y'all, we can keep using them for whatever much you want to, I need somebody to come in.
That this is fixing to happen.
But I guess my point is, I can't get another concrete guy to come in and do the work, even though they can't do it to get to the spot.
All right, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, though, and I think what Jay's saying, put on notification, okay, that might tell them, okay, and they jump on out there and get it done faster.
May, maybe so, maybe when Slay sues them, that they say, hey, look.
Is that what you're trying to say, Jay?
That's my hope.
I thought if we sued them, that ship has sailed.
No, we can, we can shut that down if they actually get somebody out there to start doing the work. We'll shut it down, but we don't even have a PO.
But that's what we're talking about.
We can't even, we can't even move on, because we're hung up on one guy right now.
Who, who does the curb work for these subdivisions on a curb or gutter subdivision when they put a road in?
Historically, you know, developer?
Same folks.
Same people?
Same people, same people that you.
There's your answer.
Which problem?
They've got enough subdivision work.
Subdivisions going on, they don't want this.
Is AdCamp, does AdCamp have their own concrete people, or they sub that out?
Sub that out.
They sub that out, can we not, can we not do our contracts that same way?
Southern Rock is kinda company to do that. Southern Rock is type companies to do that.
Yeah, but the point is, we can't go to use AdCamp's concrete people, because they were under contract on these two.
No, AdCamp subs it out, probably to them.
No, well, my point is, we can't use them, because we gotta go through the awarded process of the people we said we'd use first. I need, I need the authority to go to the third party to get the concrete done.
Start this way right here and see if it wakes them up, I mean, if it doesn't, then you're automatically going there.
I'm fine, let's move, I thought we sued them, that, that was it, you know, so, all right. We don't need your action here, there.
Subject to further refinement, that's gonna be the plan, I need, I need to work with Bridget and just make sure that, that we know what happens after we get those two cut loose by order.
Sue, uh, which is another word for it.
After we petition the court for some relief.
Yeah, hey, the only thing I'd ask you is, don't let Mike call, because they don't answer his phone calls. You're gonna have to call.
Okay.
But no, we gonna follow through, but I didn't understand how the legal system worked there.
People won't respond.
All right, I think we, we got this worked out.
We understand that, I'm just saying, I, I think Jay's just saying, I, I agree with Jay, let them, this might wake them up, it'd wake me up.
All right, Mr. Slay's getting ready to tell us what action we need to take on this.
Daniel, I just, just move that, that you authorize the board lawyer to ex, to file a petition on behalf of the county against these, I'll call them foam companies.
Whatever our concrete bidders or workers under contract, that's my most.
Concrete.
That's the, that's the add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed, like sign, motion to approve by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, got that covered, what else we got, Mr. Slay, anybody else on the board got additional business? We're having the need for executive session, Ms. Oster says yes. Uh, for what?
Hey, 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 hey!
Yep, sorry.
This is gonna take very little time, we all.
Yeah, right.
I've talked with Mr. Word, and he has enough money that he can just have it moved over without us authorizing any more money to him. We've looked at the maps, and, and there's several weather.
Is this regarding the weather sirens?
That are in cities that we pay for if they're damaged or not working. This is in an area that is probably the most rural part of this county, probably the most needed for a weather alert, I mean, I'm talking about people that may not own an iPhone, countable or weather radio, and do play outside. I'm asking that we allow Mr. Word, the authority, or to be able to move his own money, line item over, and put this sirena on the east side of the county where it's badly needed.
He's moving, he's moving.
He's moving the sign or just?
No, no, it's not moving money.
This, this is, this is west of Yogi Barrow, of Lake Road.
Oh, no, it's way, this is on the other side of Pila Hachi, that area.
Of Volker Road.
Well, it'll cover Barker, and it'll cover south, it'll cover that east.
Dobbin Bridge up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, they survived this long, I figure they could probably survive a little longer, couldn't they? Is that your mission?
That's my motion.
He wants to add that to the agenda, I believe, y'all got what he wants to do, ladies?
So Mike, you got in your budget, you take care of it?
I believe there is some money, I've got some money left over that if we take a, Ms. Laura would have to go in and look at the computer and see exactly what line items are gonna come from to move some money over. But just keep in mind, it's not a, it's about thirty-one thousand dollars, just a quote that we've got from Jackson Communications, obviously, we'd have to have two quotes on that, which may take a little time to get to. Which is good, very good, now you know how much it is, so.
Wild topic, thank you.
Oh, just a small fraction. I know the other day, we approved to do some software, or some nine thousand dollars. We didn't talk about how we was gonna pay for that that day. I know you've made a lot.
Oh, you're talking about the e-dissatches?
E-dispatch.
Yeah, yeah. How, how are you doing that?
Uh, part of that is on money that I've already cut out of the budget, the six or seven thousand dollars on the satellite telephones, three thousand dollars on the mobile command internet.
Yeah, so you've already taken.
And it's also grant compliant, too, for the emergency management performance grant.
Cool, all right.
If that thirty-something thousand is a real big problem, I know of several that are still in the city limits.
Probably about four.
Yeah, that we could take, one of those, or two, or three, or four.
I second that it to the agenda, Mr. Bruce.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross, active agenda for the location of a sirena, not an increase in budget, but just a transfer of a line item, is that correct, Ms. Oster?
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed, like sign, agenda is added, motion to approve by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion?